She's been in the medical lab, mind of business.
So they should have seen some way to make money doing it.
I turned you. Yeah. 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 Oh, we need another chair.
Is it sustained?
Hi. Do you want me to do that? Oh, I think that seems very bad. Okay. 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 Do we not need your nameplate, right? She's here, actually.
You're good.
She is. She's here.
Get informed, maybe, and see how it goes.
Let's go back.
Absolutely. You have to sit on the floor.
Yeah. Oh, we do need another chair. There's a dam. Keep the dams together.
Very hard directors at the end up too, so it's quite the fun.
At one point, we had three Kates and two Bobs at the Historical Society.
Nice.
Yep. All right. Ready when you are. Are we on?
We're on.
Are you ready, Justin? Is your microphone on? Indeed, it is. All right. We will call to order the April 18th, 2018, meeting of the Ferndale Planning Commission. We'll begin with a, oh, I'm sorry, it is 6:33 PM. We will begin with a roll call of the commission.
Commissioners Gurek?
Here.
Azar?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Brazen?
Here.
Williamson? Farr?
Here.
Cassio?
Here.
And Baker?
Here. Commissioner Williamson did let us know that he would be absent. Is there a motion to excuse his absence?
Motion to excuse.
Second.
Thank you. That was a motion by Commissioner Brazen with a second by Vice Chairman Farr. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Thank you. That motion carries. We will move on to the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda from staff or commission tonight?
I move we accept the agenda as presented.
Thank you. That was a motion to approve the agenda as presented by Councilman Martin with a second by Commissioner Farr. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. That motion passes. We will now move to a motion to approve the minutes from, where's my date? Sorry, it's in my email. Farr, what was the date of the minutes?
It was the 21st.
There we go. March 21, 2018. Sorry, it's in a different place. Are there any changes, edits to the minutes from the meeting of March 21, 2018? If that, we'll look for our motion.
I'll move to accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
Thank you. That was a motion by Commissioner Farr with a second by, was that Commissioner Brazen? Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much. That motion passes. Move back to, there we go. Well, we'll move next to our call to audience. This is a chance for anyone in the audience to address the Planning Commission on anything that is not on the agenda tonight. There are two public hearings on the agenda tonight. There's a public hearing coming up on medical marijuana facilities ordinance amendments. There's also a public hearing coming up on residential district ordinance amendments. So if there's anyone here to address the Planning Commission on something other than those two topics, this would be your chance. You've got three minutes for anything you'd like to talk to us about that's not on the agenda. Just state your name at the podium. All right. Moving on to our first public hearing. All right. Our first public hearing this evening is on the proposed amendments to the Medical Marijuana Facilities Ordinance. This is the second time that this is coming before the Planning Commission for a public hearing. In this case, the Planning Commission is a recommending body. The city council would be the final body, actually in both of these cases, because they're ordinance amendments. The city council is the final body that would approve any changes to the ordinance. So we will start with an introduction from our city staff, and then I'll open the public hearing. And when it's time for the public hearing, everyone's got a chance to come on up to the podium to state your name and address for the record, or you can sign in and back as well. And you've got three minutes to address the commission on the topic of the medical marijuana, medical marijuana facilities ordinance amendments. So we'll start with an introduction from our city staff. Hi, Justin.
Thank you. Good evening. I'll give a brief overview of everything that we've researched since the last meeting and provide a little bit of background from what we discussed at the last meeting. But on March 21, there was a public hearing to talk about potential changes to the city's medical marijuana ordinance based on the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act. We heard a lot of public feedback and had a lot of feedback received from the Planning Commission, and so staff has spent that time since then kind of going over a number of items. Generally, those items that were reviewed and requested by the Planning Commission were the overall number of facilities, the proposed zoning districts, the square footage requirements that were in the previous draft, consideration of the previously approved medical marijuana facilities that were approved through the previous special land use process, the overall licensing process, and then when should we come back and look at the ordinance after there's been some sort of evaluation period. So I'll just kind of go through what staff looked at for each of those items. As far as the type and amount of facilities, staff still is recommending to stick with one safety compliance facility and one provisioning center. That still gives staff in the city time to consider any potential negative effects or positive effects on these types of uses. This is largely due to the difference in the previous regulations, where previously we did have five under the old city ordinance, and that was kind of based on those facilities being limited, I believe, to five caregivers and the associated patients that went along with them. There wasn't really a proper amount of time to really evaluate how those facilities operated in the city, just due to the limited number that opened and the number, the limited time that those were or have been opened. Growers, processors, and secure transporters aren't being considered, and that's consistent with the previous public hearing. Staff did go back and take a look at zoning districts and the distance requirements for medical marijuana facilities. In your packet, there is sort of a, there is a map that has the buffer distance requirements considering the existing ordinance. Specifically, the commission wanted us staff to look at the office service district. So we did take a look at that. We did still feel that that was an appropriate district. There's really a, the office service district, there's a few parcels really compared to the other zoning districts in the city, and the thought was that because of the existing daycare facilities that are nearby, and if we're going to continue with that distance requirement, there's really very few, that could be, very few facilities located within that distance requirement. And since that is really the only true commercial and office district in the recommendation, this gives the city the ability to monitor and consider, you know, if there's other commercial districts that might make sense in the future. Obviously, there's distance requirements that would go with other districts, other commercial districts, but just seeing how this could affect other land uses going forward. Generally, the site plan considerations, those are staying the same. However, staff did update the square footage requirement for provisioning centers, and we can kind of get into this more later, but generally, we saw alignment with the definition of small retail establishment in the existing zoning ordinance, which is 5,000 square feet or less. So we're proposing that the maximum of 5,000 square feet of usable floor space would be for retail operations, and then the additional 5,000 square feet for a total of 10,000 square feet. So the entire operation could be 10,000 square feet, but retail, the maximum that the retail portion could be is 5,000. There's been expressed interest in educational facilities, reception area, storage, things like that, and so this clarifies the difference between spaces and kind of ensures that there's not sort of a mega facility, at least at the beginning of this ordinance. We took a look at the application process. Staff still recommends sort of option one. We laid out two options in the staff report and the packet. Option one still sets forth a process where, once the city's opted in, applicants would pursue that state application process, and then, you know, once a location meets the city's requirements in the ordinance, staff would review the application, and then Planning Commission would pursue approval. Option two allows for a little bit more local evaluation, so potentially, we went back and forth on the dates, and we could discuss this certainly, but it'd be a 30-day enrollment period that would allow applications to be submitted and scored by the Planning Commission under five categories. Those categories cover everything from location to the history of the operation in the city, and noise, odor, possible effects on the neighborhood, an accurate business plan. So I won't go all through all five of these, but that's the general overview of those. And the Planning Commission would assign points for each of those categories. Like I said, there is more local control that is part of that option, but sort of the negative, potential negative possibilities to this approach is that the city could be reviewing applications that might not actually ever receive state approval, and then the criteria may not always align with the state's review process. Regardless of the process, staff took a look at the conversation around permitted use versus special land use. The existing facilities under the old act are special land uses, as you're all familiar with. Staff's recommending permitted use. Staff shared the requirements for the state's review, and, you know, I think unless other folks have different additions to that list, we kind of, staff felt that the state list covers off on most of the ground that we would probably look at locally as well. Sections in.
Through the chair, can you clarify what that means, permitted use under the special land use or under the new ordinance?
Under the new ordinance, medical marijuana provisioning centers and safety compliance facilities would be permitted, so they would only come to the Planning Commission. They would not go the extra step to the city council.
So they would be outside of that one requirement that you started with?
It would be.
Here, the existing?
Yeah. Not the existing, but we said we changed, we were going to keep still one, the numbers, one, that was the first point that you made.
That's the recommendation.
The recommendation. But then with these other five, what are we doing with them?
They're remaining, to the extent that they're operating within the context of their special land use.
Just the special land use approval.
That's right, as provided in this draft. Those, but for the clarification, those applicants could also potentially, if the recommendation were to use option two, could submit an application to be considered for whatever the ultimate number is as it relates to a provisioning center.
And then lastly, we did add a section to consider evaluation of the ordinance. So essentially, the city manager or the designee would provide a report to city council nine months after a facility has opened and been operating a provisioning center, and then there would be a recommendation after, from that report, that's, you know, covers everything from should there be more, should there be different regulations and local control on that for these types of facilities.
And any amendment to the ordinance would come back to the Planning Commission and then back to them?
Right. Yep. So, public hearing at the Planning Commission and then city council for consideration after that. Other than that, staff did receive two letters that were provided through email and then printed as well, and then also a few binders from an existing operating facility in the city that had information about their business and considerations about the number of medical marijuana license, cardholders in the state of Michigan by county, and some additional information there. Then, that, here for, any other questions?
All right. We'll get to the public hearing. Thank you, Justin. We will open up the public hearing for the Medical Marijuana Facilities Ordinance Amendments. As we did last time, we will take, as we do every public hearing, we'll take all of the public comment during the public hearing. So folks, come up to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record. You've got three minutes to share. I'll give you a warning when we're getting close to or certainly over the three minutes to address the Planning Commission, and we'll take all of the public comment in a row. We won't sort of stop and answer questions during a public hearing. This is your chance to give public comment to the Planning Commission. After we close the public hearing, we'll work back through either with our planning department staff or our city attorney who's joined us as well to attempt to answer any questions that may have come up, and then the commission will deliberate up here as well. So with that, we'll start with opening the public hearing at 6:47 PM. Welcome. Hi.
Hello. Is that too close, or is that good?
No, that's perfect. Thank you.
Can I begin?
Please.
Okay. Hi, my name's Mike Gorney. I'm a resident of Ferndale for two years now. I'm here to speak on the medical perspective of this ordinance for medical marijuana. I worked in spinal cord and traumatic brain injury for going on six years now, and I personally have seen the benefits that medical marijuana provides to this population. We all know that this stuff works for glaucoma, back pain, you know, for relatively healthy individuals with minor problems, but I'm speaking on behalf of more of an unknown population, and that is the population with catastrophic injuries. It can help with a lot of different pain issues with them, you know, if you've ever experienced nerve pain, but it can be debilitating, and it can at least help moderate that for them on a daily basis. And without that product, they are dealing with either going to opioids or other drugs, regardless of the medical marijuana. So if you're going to choose between opioids or medical marijuana, which one would you choose? I think nowadays, the answer is pretty clear. Excuse me. Other than that, you know, the closest facilities are, in my opinion, are in Detroit, and being a resident of Detroit for three years, I have seen where the locations on a lot of these facilities are. They're not in very safe neighborhoods, and they're not in very good areas. I don't want to speak to the infrastructure, the roads, but, you know, a lot of the roads in Detroit are pretty crummy, and if you're driving a modified van on those roads, it's just not a safe situation. You're in a bad neighborhood, you know, you're in a beat-up van as it is, you hit a pothole, your car, you know, your tire blows, you're just stuck there. So, again, you know, speaking from a medical perspective, speaking from someone who's lived in the areas where these facilities are, I find that if we were to open up one in Ferndale, you provide a great service to this population, and you'd provide a lot more safety to them as well. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name is Deborah Young, 440 West Troy, and I'm really here speaking as a patient and a 10-year resident of the city of Ferndale. I am a glaucoma patient, and I have been using cannabis to treat severe pressure headaches from glaucoma for a number of years. I would like to talk about safe access. It's very important, when people have medical issues, that they have access to their medicine. And it's very difficult, when you live in a city where you know that three times the residents of the city of Ferndale have voted for legalizing medical marijuana, three times, and one time for recreational marijuana, the citizens are overwhelmingly in favor of safe access for patients. So I don't know why we are limiting access to patients. We should be expanding access to patients. As a patient, I love the walkability of my town. I don't have any mobility issues. My issue is glaucoma. I would love to walk around my town, do a little shopping, pick up my medicine, go out for dinner. Now I have to drive, if we open something here, I'm going to have to drive over into an industrial area. If you go into other cities, go into Ann Arbor and see some very upscale dispensaries, the Elm of Medicine downtown, sitting right in downtown Ann Arbor with no problems whatsoever. I think it's also something we should, we should look at. We had a chief of police who raised a lot of hysteria here when we first brought this issue up of dispensaries. He's gone now. I don't think that the things that he was talking about would occur here in Ferndale. This is a medical facility. We're not talking about a party atmosphere, we're not talking about a bar. This is a medical facility where people will come and pick up medicine. People cannot grow this medicine at home in a suburban area because of the restrictions of the state law. You can't grow outside because you can't be able to see that from the street, your neighbors aren't able to see it. You can grow a small amount inside your home. It's a roughly four-month process from seed to actual use of the medicine. It's really impossible. Most patients need to access a dispensary in a safe area. Ferndale has always been welcoming. We've been a progressive city. We're known as being a progressive city. Why are we moving backwards on this issue? I don't understand it. Other cities are moving forward. We're running away from it. Doesn't make any sense. To live in Ferndale has always been a progressive city. We've always been proud of that. Let's keep that, let's acknowledge that people need these medical facilities. Let's create safe access for patients. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Welcome. Hello.
Hi, good evening. My name is Marcy Lovelace. I am a representative from the business located at 930 East Lewiston. I'm here tonight to talk and speak on behalf of the business formerly known as Sea Gardens. We have changed our name over to Ferndale Community Gardens, as we are one of the five caregiver centers previously approved by the city. Our team has read through the new changes that the Planning Commission is recommending for the ordinance, and we are very happy to see that some of the changes that Planning Commission has made. Yet, we still are hoping that the commission would consider for more than one provisioning center as it's recommending right now. Ferndale has a current population of 20,100 as of 2017, according to Wikipedia. Looking at states that have already been operating with the cannabis industry, such as Colorado, they have an average of one dispensary for every 1,500 residents. Now, we're not certainly saying that Ferndale should adapt to those practices as Colorado has, but it does show that the one provisionary center may not be able to handle all of the patients that it needs to service. It also brings a lot of traffic to just one area of Ferndale, which was one of the concerns at the last meeting. Another thought we need to consider is only allowing one provisionary center is dictating where Ferndale patients will go to receive their medication. It's not allowing a medical patient any choice on how they obtain their medications. It's like enforcing an HMO system right on the city, right from the get-go. Also, it's important to note that this is a new industry coming to the city as well as to the state. If the city decides to only allow one provisioning center and say that provisioning center does not pass inspection by the state and they're closed, what is the alternative for the patients in the city? We feel allowing the five already established caregiver centers to be vetted by the state and then vetted again by the city will eliminate a lot of headaches or extra resources that the city would need to pull if they open applications to the public. We have already seen these problems that have happened in other cities such as Lansing and in Detroit. Also, with the city vetting the five caregiver centers already approved, this allows the city to be able to come on-site during this process to see up close and personal how things are going. We appreciate you listening to our concerns, and we hope that you take them into consideration with going forth with the new ordinance. Thank you.
Thanks, Marcy. We did receive the binder as well. Thank you.
Oh, yes.
Yep, we've got them here. Thank you.
Hi.
Hello, everyone.
Welcome.
Hi, my name's Elijah Nelson. I live at 516 East Maplehurst. I just have a brief statement prepared here. I just wanted to voice my support of medical marijuana provisioning centers and the expansion of them. I think they'll be beneficial to the city, myself, as well as neighboring cities and their residents as well. There are a lot of medical marijuana patients in this city and surrounding, and they would greatly benefit from the available access to safe locations to get their medication. And I think that should be something to consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank the board for their time and hearing all the people who came to speak today in support and opening dispensaries in the area for the patient's right to legal, lab-tested medicine, and safe, certified facilities, and would also like to thank the Michigan Health Collective for having me out to speak tonight. Michigan Health Collective has heard concerns of the community, residents, and worked closely with new requirements and laws requiring medical marijuana facilities and proposed location also meets the city ordinance requirements for zoning district and distance requirements as well. Adequate space for parking in a discreet location that was picked specifically because it was out of sight of the main commercial areas of Ferndale's downtown and main attractions in a more discreet location near the border of Ferndale. In a recent study, it was shown that 13% of doctors and medical staff were ever taught about the endocannabinoid system and how it regulates the body's homeostasis and many functions of the ECS and how it affects and regulates, how we regulate a variety of biological processes such as relaxation, feeding, sleep, certain implement, implement, implement mandatory reactions in cognitive function. As mentioned before, people in wheelchairs don't have any access to medicine, and these roads in Detroit, they're just not going to cut it. There are people that simply cannot walk, simply cannot have a ride given to them. They need access to legal medicine, and without this access, they have to, like spoken before, turn to opioids, which is a terrible, terrible decision. Recently, evidences accumulate in chemist stimulation of cannabinoid receptors by either THC or endocannabinoids influence the intracellular events controlling the proliferant apoptosis of numerous types of cancer cells, therefore leading to anti-tumorous effects in both in vitro and in vivo, which means the anticancerous of these cells, it makes it eat itself. It eats the cell quickly, and we don't know what else does that for cancer. There are many other, many other people that are going without, and we just ask the board to please understand these patients need access to legal, lab-tested medicine. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello. Hello. Welcome.
My name is Jacqueline Langwith, and I'm here from Poluchal &amp; Associates Cannabis Attorneys of Michigan. I believe you do have a letter. I'm going to briefly summarize the points from the letter. Our client is Michigan Health Collective, one of the existing facilities in Ferndale. As one of the previous speakers mentioned, the ratio of people, population to provisioning centers in Ferndale would be 1 to 20,000 or so. You have nine active pharmacies here, so you're, you know, comparing pharmacies where you can get opioids versus a place where you can get medical marijuana. It's okay to have nine pharmacies, but it's not okay to have more than one provisioning center. Also, if you look at other cities or townships in the state that have already opted in, there are three that we're aware of, and we are keeping track of everything. Crockerie Township, Tobacco Township, and White Cloud, that only allow one provisioning center. All of those municipalities have populations of 2,500 or less. Adrian allows 10 provisioning centers in two different commercial districts, and then they allow them unlimited in an industrial overlay. Adrian has 20,000, a population of 20,800, similar to Ferndale. Ypsilanti is 20,500. They allow seven. Owasso, smaller than you, they have a population of about 14,700. They haven't adopted their ordinance yet, but their cap right now is four. Hazel Park, it's three. So you would, for a population of 20,000, to have just one provisioning center does not make sense, especially because there's no empirical evidence at all for the reason that it's limited to one, the traffic problems and the public safety concerns. There's absolutely no evidence to show that provisioning centers have public safety concerns, and in fact, if you want to have traffic issues, put one provisioning center in and have 20,000 people trying to go to that one provisioning center. The other thing is competition. You're going to pick and choose the winner and the loser. Okay? You're going to pick one provisioning center for the residents and say, this is the only place you can go. You're going to foster poor product and low-quality public service because... facilities here have been here. They've invested in your community, and they've not received any return from that. They've been here, they're in the proper zones, they've been vetted, they've been permitted, they've been inspected. We think it's fair to your citizens to let them be, have preferential treatment. This has happened in Ann Arbor, Detroit, and Lansing, or, excuse me, Flint, where they're grandfathering in existing facilities. Your community has spoken that they want medical marijuana and they want access to medicine. The best way to give your citizens what they want is to get these facilities operated and keep them operating, and the best way to do that is to allow these five facilities to be grandfathered. Finally, we just think you're, you're going to be creating a problem where none exists if you just have one provisioning center. We urge you to not have any cap at all. Let the market figure out how many facilities. You can put distance between provisioning centers so that you don't have a saturation. But if you're not going to do that, we urge you to allow those five facilities who are already here, then community members, then in this community, have patients that need them. We hope you, we urge you to, to give them preferential treatment and to allow five provisioning centers in community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I know it's out of order, but may I ask a question to clarify her, a point in the letter?
Sure.
Counsel, how would you, you've listed a number of cities here that indicate they've already opened provisioning centers, but you don't speak to all of their limits. What is Flinton Bay City Cap Act?
Well, actually, Flint has not. They're just in a draft right now. Pardon me? But...
Counsel, I'm just reading that you indicate that dispensaries have opened in Flinton Bay City.
There, there, there's actually some temporarily operating. None have been actually licensed by the state yet. The dispensaries that are operating right now are what are considered Rule 19 facilities. They're operating under state regulations. They're allowed to operate while they seek their licensing, as long as they're in a municipality that allows them to do that.
So Bay City doesn't have a limit either?
Bay City does not have a what? They have a limit.
Limit either.
I believe it's 25. They allow 25 provisioning centers in Bay City.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Good evening.
Hi.
Paul Weisberger, a six-month resident of Ferndale and part owner of Oasis Wellness Center. I think there've been a lot of great comments, and I just want to touch upon a few in my three minutes that I have. It's not black or white or binary. It's not right or wrong. I think there's absolutely a concern to have too many licenses in a community. For instance, Bay City, which was just mentioned, I think has done a very poor job in allowing for 25. Despite that, we're going to be there, but we're going, it's going to be a bloodshed. We're going to have to spend a lot of time and money and energy proving ourselves to be the best or one of the best, and Darwinism, capitalism will kick in. But I'm a firm believer that, that creates a situation in which desperate people, wounded animals, cornered animals, whatever analogy you want to make, do desperate things, and that breeds criminality. I can tell you that five in Ferndale, I'm extremely comfortable with. I think five in Ferndale with not just your immediate population, but also, let's be honest, we're not going to have provisioning centers in Bloomfield Hills or Bloomfield Township. Probably not going to have any in Birmingham in the foreseeable first wave, maybe on Eaton Street later. So Ferndale's going to become the progressive, fun, cool place, forward-thinking community where people will feel safe to travel down and get their medicine. And they probably aren't going to go another mile past to eight mile. And so you're going to see a population draw, and we're businessmen. I mean, I think there's a lot of great discussion about the medicine. I'll leave that to the people that know a lot about that. But we're entrepreneurs, and Ferndale absolutely has a market that goes beyond just its borders. And you will see that these five provisioning centers, if you elect to go that number, will not be wounded animals, will not be desperate, will be, should treat their license as a golden ticket, one that they value, one that they make sure that all their employers are following their law and following their provisions, rules, and procedures. And I think, I say that with absolute comfort. I always have said I would rather be one of two and fight the vetting process than be, you know, one of 25. I'm not here just to raise the number up so that I can assure myself of a better odd of getting the, the license. I think Ferndale will be just fine with five. And on that note, you guys have already gone through the vetting process as it relates to people spacing themselves, going in the right districts. I will be the first to admit, as a planning commissioner myself and a former city attorney, that we do need to look at land use. What we were approved for was for a caregiver facility with a smaller amount of parking. I think you do need to go back through the, the system, whether it be as a permitted use, but in front of the planning commission. I think you do need to evaluate whether you have the right amount of parking. And on that end, for our facility, we've, we're securing a parking easement to the south with a great deal of parking. But I, I can appreciate the planning commissioner's comments that that needs to be taken into account. So my proposal would be that you allow for five, the five that have already gone through the process, and let me be clear, it was made very clear to us that being approved in those caregiver facilities granted us zero rights to be a, a provisioning center under the MMFLA. But I can tell you, almost every single one of those five did it in anticipation. I, I was the honest enough one to tell you that was my goal. But I have no problem with going back through the process, demonstrating that we have the parking, that we're in the right district, but you've already gone through the process of spacing these five out and reviewing those applicants. So why create the mad gold rush to the front door or the concern over how we're going to vet these out with some point systems, which I appreciate that more than the, the race to the front door? You've already got them. I would run through those five, have them go through a review process in front of the planning commission, demonstrate that they have enough parking for the new concept that they have. It is marijuana, but it is now a much greater customer base. And if they meet that, grant them the license to be an MMFLA license, not because we earned it or we're crying, you know, crocodile tears and we deserve this, but because you've already done it and it is in the right place. These are places we've invested, bought, we've spent over $100,000 in rent preserving that spot. I think it's the right spot to be, and I would hopefully we could have that opportunity. And to the extent all five didn't get approved, I'm almost done. To the extent all five did not get approved, whether that only two got approved, three, four, then you would have a, an at-large permit application that you could then announce that you are going to start accepting applications for that remaining permit. But that, that to me would eliminate some of the legal issues and concerns about who we're going to select, go through that process in the right zones with the right number. Five is fine. And with that, I would end my comments. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Paul. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Richard Barron. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Foley, Barron, Metzger &amp; Yipe. I submitted some information for the planning commission's consideration, and I have a few comments on those items that I submitted as well. First of all, if in fact you do decide to go with an option system, we would suggest that option number two is better than option number one. The reason being that option number one just creates a mad rush, but also requires people to spend a lot of money going through the state evaluation process, which is not a lightly, you know, undertaken process. At least with option two, there is significantly more local control, there's local input. It gives the planning commission the opportunity to evaluate applicants and to rank them, and then they still have to go and apply to the state and go through that entire vetting process. But there's been more input at this level where you can evaluate, you know, prior business practices, what you know about the operations that an individual or business already has within the community, local compliance issues, things like that. So we think that would be an important consideration. However, there is an open question, and counsel mentioned it earlier with regard to the, and other commenters have as well, with regard to the special land use issue for those five that are there. And because there appears to be some inconsistency within the proposed draft, it is unclear as to what those five SLU grantees would be able to do now. Would they be able to go ahead and apply to the state saying they had special land use approval? Now the MMFLA has come into play, and they want to go with a provisioning center, for instance, or are they, do they really have nothing other than a place for people to meet? So there's been further discussion on that already tonight, but either way, that needs some clarification. As to the ultimate number of facilities within the community, you know, that's a matter for local control. One may be way too few. Five or six, at least for starting out, probably is about right. 25 is probably too many, but that's more of a judgment call than anything else as opposed to a legal call. If in fact the commission does do a ranking system, we would suggest that there be no ties, so that if you accept applications for a certain window, period of time, you vet those people, and if you're, if you make an internal decision that we need to have 90-plus as a score before we're, you know, as soon as we get to however many we want, 10, for instance, with a 90-plus score, then we're going to stop. Then those people that receive that score could decide, hey, I'm, I'm the last one on the list. Do I really want to apply? I'm the first one on the list, well, I'm certainly going to apply. So they could decide whether they wanted to spend the money with the state and go through that whole process. Maybe they are looking at another community, maybe not. Maybe Ferndale's the only place they want to be, but at least it gives people more input as to how they can control their own destiny, whether they should go forward or not. In terms of confidentiality of submittals, absolutely, because that's got business information, there's security information, things like that. That should for sure be kept confidential. On disposal, I made a, a technical comment there that you should be talking about any, you know, cannabis-infused product, whether it's flower or extract, but really probably the easier way to address that is to simply indicate that any licensed facility within the city limits has to comply with whatever requirements the state has in place relative to disposal of unused or degraded product or otherwise, rather than interjecting yourselves into that particular point. The state's going to have a pretty robust and does have a pretty robust regulation. They're going to want to know what people are doing. I guess it's a matter of local consideration, whether you want to put on additional requirements, but the state will probably have that handled, and you're just maybe getting into an area that you don't necessarily need to because it's already covered. In terms of some of the timing, I believe it was with option one where it talked about a COO or certificate of occupancy at the time of the application. That seems to be putting the cart before the horse, because if in fact someone wants to enter into this business in a particular location, then as I read that regulation, the proposed ordinance, they would have to spend a boatload of money to make sure their facility is all built out, that they had all the inspections, that they have the local permits, everything else to get their COO. And then the state may say, well, we don't like your plan, we don't really like your fire suppression, it's not quite what we were looking for, your security system isn't quite right, et cetera. And then they're kind of back to square one where they've already spent the money. It would seem to make much more sense and be frankly kinder to the applicants and, you know, and business-wise, it just is more logical to allow them to go to the state once the city has made whatever decision it's made, to allow an applicant to go to the state, go through that entire vetting process, the pre-qualification process, and then if they have a location, then the second part of the process. And then the state says, okay, you're fine with what you've planned. The city, the city still has the ability on the back end to say, well, we're only going to give you the COO if you comply with the requirements. But then they're not doing a build-out that they otherwise may not need to do.
I'm going to give you a 30-second warning.
Okay.
Okay.
And I think that I really don't have anything else.
Okay.
So I will just leave those 20 seconds hanging out there. Thank you very much, and thanks for considering the comments in the letter.
Thank you, Richard. Yep, we've got the letter right here. Thank you. Are there any other comments for the public hearing this evening? Again, the, the planning commission is a recommending body in cases like this. The city council, there would be another public hearing at a city council meeting where there would, you have the additional discussion on this. All right. Last call. All right. Seeing no other commenters at this time, we'll close the public hearing at 7:15 PM. We will look to our city staff, Justin and Dan, you guys, just let me know who's got the, the right answer to a couple of these, because I'm not sure. I know you've been working on this for a long time, so just pitch it to Dan when needed. So there were a number of, of comments about, you know, the potential size of the market or number of people in Ferndale. What's, what's the law around who can obtain a medical marijuana card? I mean, there are 20,000 people in Ferndale, but there's a good number of those under 18 or under 21. What's the, what's the law about, about how old you have to be, or is there one?
I'll lead on Dan for that.
I, I believe you have to be 18, but, but I'm not at the moment. I'm sure that people from the audience probably have more insight as to the specific application to become a qualified patient, and I, you know, I don't want to misstate that for, for the board. But I certainly agree with you as it relates to it being some subpart of the city population. And the point is valid, I believe, that there will be qualified patients that, from other adjacent communities...
Oh, certainly.
...that would wish, for, for some of the reasons noted, safety, good roads, who may wish to exercise the choice in Ferndale if given that option.
Right. That was actually my next question, was there isn't anything barring anyone from, you know, because when I looked at actually some of the information here from what used to be Sea Gardens, and I've just forgotten your new name, unless it's on the front, Ferndale Community Gardens, looking at the cities, it looks like there aren't currently a lot of cities in, in Oakland and Wayne counties that, that permit this, but those that do are relatively close to us, particularly Hazel Park in Detroit.
Right.
Okay. All right. Just wanted to make sure I understood. So our market area, when we talk about one provisioning center here, three in, in Hazel Park, you know, some additional number in Detroit, sort of our, our eight-mile corridor or maybe south of 10-mile corridor, whatever we want to call it...
Yeah, I think Southfield is still studying the issue, but hasn't, hasn't decided.
Okay. Southfield hasn't decided.
I don't believe they have decided.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful. Just in terms of better understanding that market area. So I had a question about... Come back. About safety. We know we have a walkable community. We know that any, you know, this is something that, that really commissioners as our embrace and have taught me over the years, you know, anything that, that we permit in terms of reviewing a site plan will be, will include accessible parking spaces, will include, you know, sort of safe access to doors and sidewalks, and, you know, we work really, really hard at that. But there were a couple of comments that came up about safety and why Ferndale might be preferred because we are a safer or more easily navigable space than other cities. I wondered, is any, any comment? I'm not asking you to bag on other cities, but, you know, any sort of thought or comment on us being a preferred location and needing to take advantage of that?
I mean, that could be a perception, you know, thing. I, you know, I think that that perception is changing in regards to the cities around us as well, just like it has for Ferndale over the years. So I can see that being a discussion point. I'm not 100% concerned with that, but...
But to our knowledge, you know, any site plan review that's going on in Hazel Park is going to take some of these similar things into consideration about legal requirements around ADA accessibility and...
Sure. Yes.
Just to the best of your knowledge.
To the best of my knowledge, yes.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you. There were then a couple of other very specific questions when we get into the, really looking at the nitty-gritty of the options and the ordinance language. I'm going to come back to a, a couple particularly that, that Richard just brought up at the end. But I think the, the big question tonight was around the, the number of, of centers, the, the number of uses and the types of uses. I think the location of uses has been well-established over the years in terms of the, the districts, but wanted to get the sense of the commission on a conversation about permitted use rather than special land use, as well as locations, and see, before we kind of dive into specifics around place, you know, option one, option two, or specific language. Any general thoughts on where things are located, on whether it should be a permitted use versus special land use? Or are you comfortable with the recommendations?
I, for one, am comfortable with the recommendations that have been laid out in front of us at this point.
Okay. For the locations on that, the permitted use?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
number of, of centers, the, the number of uses and the types of uses. I think the location of uses has been well established over the years in terms of the, the districts, but wanted to get the sense of the commission on a conversation about permitted use rather than special land use as well as locations and see, before we kind of dive into specifics around place, you know, option one, option two, or specific language. Any general thoughts on where things are located and whether it should be a permitted use versus special land use? Or are you comfortable with the recommendations?
I for one am comfortable with the recommendations that have been laid out in front of us at this point.
Okay. For the locations on that, the permitted use?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I would recommend going down to comment room.
Thank you. That's how, I'm just trying to like, what are the things we've got consensus on?
Sure.
And then we'll dive into some of the specifics. It's very helpful. I had one question. So Justin, in terms of making this a permitted use, and this may go a little bit to, if I understood Dan's question earlier, so I might touch on that. If this is a permitted use in a district and, you know, there aren't any major modifications, they're in compliance with parking and all sorts, I mean, potentially, we're not going to see these, are we?
I think we'd need site plan approval if it was a new
If it needs it.
Yeah.
That's right.
Well, and if I may, and it also depends on which option we choose for vetting. If we go with option two, it's going to come back here.
That's a great point. That's a great point. But typically in a permitted use, let's say with option one and two aside, if they've met all the requirements for administrative approval, it's not coming back to the planning commission.
Typically, but in the site plan approval section, it allows for the CED director to send any site plan that they wish to the planning commission. I think this type of use would, would qualify for that.
Well, it's the CED's director's birthday, so probably we don't do that.
Right.
What?
It's his birthday.
Oh.
That's why we put this year in today, actually.
Yeah, Justin.
Didn't get it. Happy birthday. Happy birthday, John.
But I think in, in, in most cases, it would be an intensification use of what is, is there. So, and, and there were the modifications would be enough. So I, I'm not too concerned with that, but.
So if it was one of the, one of the five that has already gone through this process and if everything, you know, still complied with updates to the ordinance, under option one, potentially, we wouldn't see anything back here unless city staff decided to exercise that right and bring something specifically back.
I think, correct. I think we would recommend, we would
I'm trying to make sure I understood.
Probably recommend they all come to planning commission because they're under the old model with the limited number of caregivers and the limited number of patients. Now you're increasing that to unlimited. So I think in all instances, we would bring those back.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's helpful. What do you want to jump to first?
I have one question, and then I, of course, have a page of comments and thoughts. The one question is, I'm sorry, you probably said it, I missed it, but in your last component, you talked about how long for reevaluation. What did we settle on?
Nine months.
Nine months.
Is the, is the
I know I missed it in some way.
Is the recommendation.
I don't know if I actually said it, so.
Okay. Thanks.
You did. And that's the recommendation. It's nine months. Correct?
Okay.
Okay.
That being said, I, I wonder if that's an appropriate amount of time as far as, is that too long of a period to be evaluated at least or not?
I certainly wouldn't go any longer. You know, the number I was kicking around was six to nine.
Okay.
You know, of operation. And I think we should be able to make an evaluation by then. I, I can live with either of those. I think staff recommendation of nine is fine to me, considering some of the other changes I'd like to suggest on the road.
Well, and just remember that realistically, if you've got a report at nine months, it means you're probably getting a, a nine-month report is probably coming to you in month ten. And then there would need to be public hearings in order to amend
Sure.
language. So you're really talking about effectively a year.
That's why I said I wouldn't go any longer than nine.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Point.
So in terms of, I'll just go straight through the points in the memo that we got from, from the city. And the first point was around the, the staff's recommendation on the type and amount of facilities. That was a big conversation last time. Obviously a big conversation among our public commenters. And the staff is, is recommending the same as last time, one safety compliance facility and one provisioning center.
If, if I may, I think there's a couple of those points that are related. The total number and the five that have already been approved. And so I'd like to take up the conversation of both of those, at least briefly, if I may.
Please.
Okay. So here's, I, I, first off, kudos to city staff. I think this is a difficult issue. We sent it back to rework after a whole bunch of work, and I think you guys have done just a superb job. So thank you in, in helping us navigate this, this really difficult issue. Where I draw a little bit of difference with what you're recommending is, is the number to open. One is too, in my opinion, too few. I also have, and I went on record last time, an issue with in any way, shape or form, cart launching the five we've approved. And here's why. The city's intent and council's intent and the planning commission's intent was to help patients. Not all five of those, I appreciate the investment in the city, not all five of those even came close to opening. Some tried to open in good faith and whether political climate or law enforcement climate shut them down. And I think that's a shame because it got away from our intent to help patients. I think one is too few, but I do want to give some consideration to those that did make a good faith effort, effort to open, was not engaged in speculation and did try to open, but because of the climate couldn't. So my recommendation would be to allow a total of three, use option two to vet the applicants and include a categorization in there that would give preference, not absolutism, but preference to those facilities that made a good faith effort in opening. Because it is my belief, and no one's been able to prove it differently, not all five of those are created equal. So I want to, I want to give preference to those that did come in and made an honest effort to help patients, which is our policy goal all along. And then look at one, you know, above one, go to three total with new applicants and, and the five can, can apply as well. Use option two to vet it with that criteria for those that tried to open and then reevaluate at nine months to see. And if it's not arduous, we open more. It'll never be twenty-five. You know, I was born in Bay City, God love them, but I couldn't see that. But I, I just, I think one's too small to get out of the gate and we have, we have no evidence that there's a huge detraction that three would be anymore birds. So that's my initial parlay.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission on type and number of facilities?
Through the chair. Justin, what was the intention of leaving out the other three categories of license holders? Was there thought behind that? What was the basis for?
I'm sure there was thought.
Well, of course there was thought behind it, but what was that thought? And why do we not, I mean, when I'm looking at this, these five categories, they work together is what the, the intention of the state was, having to secure transporters. To me, I, I don't understand why we leave that out when, if we're going to have provisioning centers, they're going to have to obviously have transportation of safety, safe transportation. So can you talk us through why we got to just opening one of each as the recommendation?
Sure. Yeah, so staff from various departments got together and, and we, we talked about, we kind of talked about, we started from there, right? If we had all five, what would that look like? You know, not having an, an example nearby, you know, we just use our best judgment and, and talked about a lot of things. We toured some facilities. Some were more well-run than others. But essentially, we had said with grow operations, you know, it, it seemed like they're from, I won't, I won't single out specific departments, but some had felt that the noise and odor, or not noise, but odor specifically, could be an issue because of the proximity of residential next to industrial and next to the office service districts. I mean, unless you're in the heart of the industrial center, you're, you're pretty much, you know, a block away from residential. So there, I don't think that we ever got a clear distinction that the smell would not be an issue. And we've had smell being an issue with grow operations in like single-family homes, which a little is, is different. And, you know, you can probably judge some of the expertise on some of those different grow houses, some being better than others. But, but so that was part of the discussion with grow operations. Secure transporter, a lot of that was concern for safety in that, you know, what type of operation would those be? Would it be like a Brink's truck, truck that's armored that's transporting these facilities back and forth? I think we've seen more examples probably since the first ordinance was reviewed, but that was part of that. And then is it the processor is the, the last one? The, a couple of departments had some fire-related concerns in operations with that. Though it was probably not a very professional facility, there was a facility on Hilton that blew up.
Just had a fire.
Yeah, that was operating illegally. And, you know, our, some of our staff is pretty trained in, in those, in those sorts of emergencies and they had strong concerns about the potential explosive nature of those types of facilities. That's, that's the short version for, for those three. But we tried to, we tried to start from scratch, looking at all five, rather than just going with what was previously in the, in the previous ordinance.
Tangential to your question, I just want to make a comment about my comments. I don't think I was clear enough. When I said three, I mean, three provisioning centers and then the one additional other type. So just to be clear.
Thank you. You're on the floor.
Yeah, no, that, that's all. Thank you, Justin.
Okay.
And to, just to further clarify, although I, I went back and looked at it, I think it's, it's pretty straightforward. That review that would come after nine months of operation would include a broader look at whether other types, I think it didn't just say you're going to review the two types that are permitted.
Sure.
It said that you'll review what should be.
Sure. I think in, I think at that point, we could also probably bounce ideas and experiences off of our neighboring communities that opt in as well.
Okay. Yeah, same. With the evaluation of the ordinance, blah, blah, blah. So you give an opinion on the types and limits of marijuana facilities. So you intended that broadly?
Yes. And we can, if, if we need to add that language, it's okay too.
I, I just want to try and understand.
Yep.
So that perhaps those three others would be part of that conversation in, in nine months.
Sure. Yeah.
Any other comments on type and number of facilities? Or we can jump to?
Through the chair.
Yeah.
I guess my, my concern is I think we need to review it a little bit more quickly than nine months. I think if we, if, if we're going to look at this with only three facilities, initially I was thinking one facility, but I don't know if we can gauge it. And if our true concern is the patients, then we need to be able to allow them this access that's safe quickly. And in thinking about that, if we're going to only allow a few, then we need to come back and look at it rather quickly to see if it's meeting needs or not meeting needs. So I would propose a three-month review instead if we're going, if we're going with a larger number, if, if, if obviously they said, let's open five, then maybe six months. But I think the general voice from the public is that they, they want the access that they're allowed. So I, I would kind of vary that. If we're going to lessen the number of facilities opened, then a much shorter review period. But if we're going to put a larger number of facilities out there than a, it's a little bit longer time till we have to review it.
I think three feels, the question of having a job we could do in three. And if you're telling me three's plenty, I'm cool. I, you know, six is fine too. I just, my point in bringing this up last time was that I just, we need a date so people know and so we, we hold ourselves to it, you know. I just question if we'd get the data in three months? I don't, I don't know.
Right.
Maybe we could, and that's great. I would rather do it sooner than later as well. But maybe six is a nice compromise if we're concerned about the amount of data we get in three.
I think staff would prefer six just, especially if there's a larger number. And then we can have a, a tight list of what we're reviewing from traffic counts to, you know, any violations and things like that. I, I think six would be a happy medium, but whatever pleases the planning commission and council.
Yeah, to that end, like for example, traffic violation, I'm not sure three would even get them through the courts to find out if that's a legitimate concern or not. Again, my, my sentiment's right there with you. I just.
Yeah.
Yeah, six sounds about right. Yeah. I'm seeing heads nodding about a six-month review rather than waiting for nine. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, the, the, our city attorney makes a great point. It doesn't prohibit the CED department from keeping us advised in the meantime. It doesn't have to be seen in six months.
That's great. So looking at then site plan considerations, any discussion about, we talked about maximum square feet for retail operations and then sort of support operations? One of the letters that we received asked us to clarify a bit further the, the difference between those two things. You know, is a, is a reception space part of your retail operation or is it part of your support operation? Last time, we, we certainly heard that the, the twenty-five-hundred, I think that was the number last time, maximum was, was unclear and potentially too small. So we're at a much bigger number now. The hours, the operating hours, everyone who has already come through the process, when we reviewed business plans, in my recollection at least, conformed to something very similar to this in terms of retail operating hours. So the, the hours didn't, didn't seem strange to me. We reviewed it at special land use hearings last, for the last couple of years, and they've been very similar to this. In terms of size.
Through the chair. Just on the hours. So I haven't been part of those previous discussions as far as the hours. Is the Sunday noon to six PM true across all types of uses or, I'm just, you know, I, I, why is one day separated out from all other days as far as uses within the city?
I think, I think it's consistent with alcohol, correct? The hours to sell alcohol are different on Sundays.
It doesn't have
But they don't end at six PM.
Six.
Yeah. So are you recommending that they be the same across all seven days?
That would be my thought.
Through the chair. Just a similar consideration. I mean, shouldn't it mimic the hours that our pharmacies are operating under instead of, we keep comparing it to a liquor alcohol establishment, but.
Oh, that's a great point. You're right.
I think that really varies. You know, the smaller operations aren't open as much as the nearly twenty-four hour CVS, right?
True, but are they limited in any way?
Oh, by ordinance? Not to my knowledge.
The pharmacies inside those establishments aren't limited.
Or the freestanding ones. Not to my knowledge, we don't, we don't limit operating hours of pharmacies. No.
No.
So is the recommendation that the hours are the same across all days or that we're not limited?
Yeah, if you've got reporting guidelines, what are you reporting against if you don't have some limit? I mean, if you want to make it the same as all days, I wouldn't make it twenty-four hours though.
I'm, yeah, I, I'm fine with that. I, I think the Sunday is just a weird.
Yeah.
Mr. Gerg, does that, does that align?
Yeah, I was more concerned with the Sunday being separated out.
Okay. In terms of other parts of the, the site consideration, parking requirements, the one per two-hundred and square, two-hundred-and-fifty square feet of floor area for medical clinics is the same as retail. I did have a question about whether we are focusing on the overall size of the building or the retail operation space for the parking.
We, for, for other site plans, we've typically divided it up by use for like a production facility with retail use. So I think we'd apply the same here if that makes sense to everybody else.
I think it does. Yeah. Similar to what else we've done at M1.
Through the chair.
Yeah. So potentially a lower requirement if you've got warehouse in back and
Sure. Yes.
and retail front.
I was going to move on to the square footage. So for the, my understanding of what, with the ten thousand square foot maximum, I'm fine with that recommendation. I don't understand the carving out exactly five and five as something being a necessary part of that. I think someone may want to have twenty-five-hundred square feet for their, what I would say front of the house versus back of the house operations. I mean, when I'm thinking about this, like every time, keep going to, what does a pharmacy look like? If I walk into CVS, is my reception part of the back of the house? No, not really. It's part of receiving the gas in the front of the house. So that's my comparative. So I'm fine with ten thousand. I don't think it necessarily has to have that break at five. I think it, it could be moved a little bit, but maybe some minimums high and low.
Minimums or maximums?
Minimums or maximums. What I'm saying is that you couldn't get rid of all Minimums or maximums. What I'm saying is that you couldn't get rid of all of your warehouse, back of the house space, and you couldn't get rid of all of your front of the house space, so you'd have to reserve, maybe we could put a limit of one thousand on either end as either minimums or maximums, whichever way you want to place it. So a sliding scale in there, but within boundaries.
Uh, through the chair, if I could, based on how this is written, we've doubled what we've allowed for retail in the previous recommendation and allowed for an additional five thousand square feet of, of theoretically back of house space. It seems like we've made pretty significant uh improvements to this as far as the size goes. Um I would be hesitant to allow for even more retail space on top of this, uh considering we, we've doubled that and said, none of your back of house has to fall onto that twenty-five hundred square feet now. So to me that.
Or five thousand.
Sorry.
Yep.
Um, well, previously twenty-five hundred. Um so to me, this seems like a good place to start at least. It's, five thousand square feet for retail is, is twice the size of what we would consider small-scale retail, so.
And I would add, keep in mind that, I mean, I like the adjustment to ten thousand. I think that was a smart move based on feedback. The original recommendations didn't come out of a vacuum. We had several work sessions with feedback from a lot of different people, a lot of different areas, but these are foundationally based off of, and I want to be somewhat respectful to that too, that we don't. There was a lot, kind of discussion and logic about splitting the two. I do like the bigger square footage. I think that makes sense, but I, I would agree. Let's just leave it as it is.
I think it was small before and, but I think.
Yeah.
We've accommodated for that now.
I, I guess, I'm, I'm thinking in, in reality and in the real world, we're not going to have buildings that are, you know, being built for this. We're reusing space a lot of the time, so maybe my space really fits well when I have thirty-five hundred square feet of front, you know, front of the house and sixty-five hundred in the back of the house. What is our breakdown going to be if we're less than ten thousand total square feet? So I mean, I'm, my, what I need to figure out, I guess, to be fine with this is, is this a strict standard? Is it a, one that we can give variance to? Is it something that um, is it considered aspect of it or is it, you gotta have five thousand in the front and five thousand in the back, and as we get smaller, it's always fifty-fifty on the breakup? I mean, how are, that has to be, if we're going to change the ordinance to reflect that, it has to kind of have some give to it so that, you know, people that are applying.
Yeah, the, the way it's set up now is it's not, it's not a fifty-fifty. You've got the maximum on each side and you can ask for variance if it goes up that.
Is that correct, Justin?
Not to the planning commission, but to the board of zoning appeals.
Right.
The board of zoning appeals would re, would review a variance for an internal use?
For variances. They could.
Okay.
They, they, they consider variances from the strict parameters of the zoning ordinance.
Other comments on square footage?
Finally, something that doesn't come here.
We'll go to Ian, and he's not here tonight.
Yes.
Hey, here you go, here we go. Other comments on square footage hours? Anything else more generally on um site plan considerations? Obviously, parking is called out because it's always a conversation that we have. Um Sounds like we are going to see these site plans, um even if they are permitted uses. Anything you'd be looking for?
Through the chair, just to clarify, Justin, the five prior applicants were all special land use approved?
Correct.
And how, how many of them would be permitted if this, as this moves forward?
They would be all permitted if they're operating under their existing special land use, uh but they all would have the opportunity to apply through the state and then reapply through the city's process.
And the locations where they are, if they reapplied, would be permitted then?
Correct.
They wouldn't be required to have special land use, but we would still see them?
Correct.
Thanks. Just wanted to clarify.
Yep.
Sorry, just thinking, I'm writing down a question I don't want to forget to ask when we get to it. Okay. All right, I can move down to, all right, the application process.
Up through the chair.
Yep, please.
I think we skipped over the zoning district.
Did I? Oh. Thank you. Yep, so the, the zoning districts um are unchanged from the existing. I believe that the spacing requirements are similar to existing as well in terms of the five hundred feet from certain uses as well as from each other.
Yeah, so I guess um my, my question on that one is, once again, with the office service, um as it is, not in the industrial type of those two districts. Um and the selection of that um office service, is it, trying to, I'm just trying to figure out why this district verse um, you know, a general commercial or something like that, so. Kind of wondering if this is selected because there's just a few number of parcels um or something about the use in that district as it is currently versus other districts in the city. Um if we're trying to, you know, mitigate any negative, potential negative um, you know, ramifications of, of an additional use, so. Kind of, kind of getting down to that, that reasoning, um I know you kind of addressed it a little bit with the discussion here, but um, yeah.
Sure.
The driver for that decision.
Sure. Um, a lot of that really came out of the discussions with city council. Um and they had felt that those were still appropriate, but um when I went back and looked um just at the history of that decision-making, it, it was because of limited parcels, like you said. Um at the time, there, there weren't as many daycares um when the original ordinance was adopted, so that was kind of new, and so when I had kind of did the buffer map, I said, you know, that, there's kind of a limited area where you could open one of these facilities because of the daycares that are there right now. Um and so we felt mostly, um and I, we mostly felt that if this is kind of at an evaluation period, whether it be six months or nine months, um if one d, facility does open up in those districts, then we can really evaluate. You know, it, that district, really those, those um, the office service district had always been, has been, at least in recent time, kind of a, what do we do with this district? Um it's commercial, but they're small parcels, they're not a ton of parking, they're really close to residential, um and so it seemed like maybe it's not that different than C three potentially, um because of Eight Mile, Frontage and things like that. Um but it seemed like a good opportunity to test it, and then during that evaluation period, we can say, um, you know, would it make sense to be part of C three potentially or C two? But it just seemed like a small enough area that is different enough from industrial that it could, could be a place to evaluate it. Um but I, I mean, I could certainly see C three being a district in the future, but I think maybe this might be an appropriate place to start.
Yeah, that's, um, you know, and I'm looking at the considerations of it, and you kind of touched on it. Um it is a, a district that unlike the industrial, um which has like a core piece to it, um the office service is entirely an edge district where it's always abutting another district.
Yeah.
Which, you know, a great portion of our industrial does that as well, just based on the nature of the size and, um but it does seem to be a little bit of a different case than the industrial. Um I would be more interested in, are there medical facilities allowed in office service that are not permitted in general commercial or C three?
I believe, I'd have to double check. I don't think pharmacies are permitted like in the industrial district, but medical office, like dentists and things like that are allowed in pretty much all the commercial type districts. And then, of course, in uh, for, from a retail perspective, if you see it as retail, um that's not permitted industrial right now, but it is permitted in office service, C three, C two. Um I think it kind of goes back to you also, just with O, O S, we've, we've had a few rezonings, especially closer to Eight Mile. We've had one rezoning to M one, we've had one to C three there, so. You know, I think that whole zoning district in general needs further study. What, what should it be? Should it be C three? Should it be its own um, you know, district that has different parameters, but um I think in the O S district right now, um I think there are a couple of um small medical offices and then there's a medical supply store. Um but, but that's kind of where we landed.
Right, okay. Yeah, so for me, I'm looking at any sort of differentiation between that office service um and getting more into the other commercial type uses. Um and if we're stepping out of the industrial into another one, is that, I mean, I understand trying to keep it a limited scale for a test case, but to me, I don't see the full justification behind that. I think either we're staying in industrial or we're stepping out into kind of a whole new range of um districts, so um I don't know. I think, anybody else has a comment on that up here, but.
Sure. I think probably part of the other thought was that um, so for the mixed-use districts, right, MX D one and two, those are very in neighborhoods essentially, so I think we ruled that one out um from the start. Um and then C two does encapsulate most of Woodward. And so in the initial conversations with council, I think there was a thought that, you know, we may not want to start on Woodward. Um and then there's a mixed use on Eight Mile, but there's also C three as well. Um I think C three would probably be one we may consider after this evaluation period, but I think that just depends on how these one or three um go.
Any other discussion on districts? Sorry, districts?
I have a quick follow-up with it. Um and it kind of gets back to the public safety aspect. Are there different standards for city or the street infrastructure as far as lighting based on different districts or um kind of what is, what's the driver for um that, those kinds of, that kind of infrastructure in the city?
I'd probably lean on our DPW director on some of that. I mean, um, you know, for Woodward and Eight Mile, those are M dot controlled, so that's their driver, and Ten Mile is um Oakland County Road Commission. Um but I think a lot of it is, has just been historical, um but that's something we can look into.
There's no additional discussion on zoning or recommended changes to zoning tonight. Justin, is that something that you can include in the, in the review in terms of location and whether there's other districts that the city would recommend?
Sure.
So that we remember to look at that? Even if you don't recommend a change, we might want to talk about one, so.
Sure. I think one interesting point as well is that on Hilton Road, the M one district does touch the west side of Hilton Road. Um the master plan calls for that to be mixed use in the future. Um there's kind of a variety of buildings there from industrial to some that could lend themselves to more commercial and already have kind of transformed. Um so, you know, that, that area would be an interesting test case that if, if the two, uh, two of the five that are existing medical marijuana facilities, if they pursue this process and are approved, that, those could be very interesting to watch um on how that i, is on one of our major corridors and if, if there's any negative or positive um impact.
Mr. Gurrick, anything additional?
No, I, I guess I just still have the hesitation of that, stepping out into the office service. Um, you know, I look at it on Nine Mile where there's a stretch there where it's backing up to R one. Um I mean, obviously, the industrial also is aligned with um R one south there on um Wanda, so it's the same case, but it, it is, um, I'm just, yeah.
I think, I think we just wanted to, we felt the industrial district might be too limiting um to only have it there, so if we have it in the office service district, that might just provide something, again, just something else to evaluate, but I don't think we're opposed to expanding in the future.
All right, moving on to application process. Um the city has presented uh two potential processes. Um I wanted to, to ask a quick clarifying question. Um is, is state approval the first step in both of these options? Or, so we had an attorney tonight talk about a preference for option two, because if I understood correctly, it would give the applicant more assurance that if they spent a lot of money and time to get approved by the state, they had a home here in Burnell. Um where does state approval fit in in each of these options? Are we making people run in our circle before they run to the state's circle or what's the?
I believe option one would require state approval first, and then option two could be concurrent with the state's uh application process. Uh so staff's concern initially was, um, you know, if we receive all these applications, we could be spending a lot of resources and, and time in reviewing applications that may have no chance to be approved at the state level.
How interesting. Um so in option one, and, and I didn't catch that the first time around. Um it, it came through clearly in option one, but in option two, at least it wasn't clear to me.
I apologize.
No, 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 not, it's, not you. Um that, that, that was a difference, that we might potentially be reviewing things that wouldn't ultimately be licensed at the state level, but I certainly see the, the two sides of the coin. Uh, you know, if I'm a business owner, before I spend a lot of time and resources, I want to know that I've got a home, so like.
Sure.
It was similar to the conversation about do we get site plan approval first or brownfield approval first, right?
Right.
Yeah, I get it. Um, who wants to kick off conversations on option one versus option two? I think we've heard Dan's preference. Um in terms of option two, did you have anything else on that, Dan, you wanted to throw in at the moment?
Oh, I think I've been pretty outspoken. I like option two with the, there's some language in there already that Dan pointed out that, that supports those that have made a good faith effort in opening in the community. Um that gives them a few extra points. So that's my preference. I mean, feel free to disagree with me. I get another crack at this.
Well, the, the point system is something that's, would be new for the planning commission. We certainly have, you know, levels of criteria, criteria related to, you know, land use, public health, safety and welfare, you know, that we go through when it comes to a special land use or P U D. Um but the idea of us deciding on points, um I've been on a number of grant review committees for the state of Michigan, for example, and at those, um, at those committees, um there can be a significant difference. Um so I guess one of my questions is in this point review process, is the whole planning commission coming with their scoring sheet and we're hashing it out? How do we come to, do we all hand them to you and you make an average? How do we? Cause I could be, I could just love everybody and give everybody all the points, and Deb could be like, oh, miser, and not give anyone any points, so what's the, points is, is not something the planning commission typically does, so.
Sure.
Yeah.
Um, we, I mean, we've, I think we talked about a few different ways to do that.
Okay.
I think our initial hesitation with option two is that it, I think someone referenced picking winners and losers. I think that opens you up for potentially more litigation.
Both of them were referred to as that, so.
Yes, that's true, yeah. Um I think option two is more of a potential issue with litigation, but.
I, I think my preference would be that it's, is what, you've got one, one staff for review. Staff could evaluate it around a consistent template. Bring us the scoring system and then we would decide through a legislative process of motion and what have you of, we validate that or we invalidate that. We really become kind of the quality control component of this. I didn't foresee us all with our sheet giving the scores. I just don't see that.
That's my question, yeah. Through the chair, also having participated in a number of committee-based decision-making processes, that the option two does provide some challenges that I think, I don't know that this body wants to have the final say on, and the realities that could potentially cause trouble.
I, I just would add a reminder that last time we had this public hearing, there was some strong belief that this come back to planning commission, where staff said it didn't need to. So I just want to make sure that's out there, and this was a response to feedback from planning commission at the last public hearing.
And, you know, going through something like a special land use process, which is something that is, is public, it's, it's well laid out. I mean, so I guess one of my concerns is, is this a public process? Cause trust me, when we hashed this out at Michigan Council for Arts and Cultural Affairs, it is public, it is on video, it is, like, everyone.
I think it should.
Can hear it. Um.
If I could just, through the chair, you remember that this is for the permitting process, which isn't part of the zoning ordinance, so this is a separate permitting um provision and does contemplate potentially applicants seeking that permit under the city ordinance while. seeking that permit under the city ordinance while perhaps in the queue attempting to get their state-issued license.
Sure.
They would not be able to open, should they get the permit from the city until they have in fact had the state-issued license provided to them. But going back to the issue of the, of the, of the point system, there, there is, again, this is good discussion, the plan commission was identified as the reviewing entity, but certainly could be referred to the CED, who would make a recommendation relative to the scoring to, to the plan commission for approval or not. And there's a lot of different ways that that could be achieved with respect to the scoring process.
And candidly, it's no different than what happens today, other than a little more structure. We get a recommendation from the staff to approve this or not approve this after review. And we never see that criteria. No offense, I believe you.
Oh wait, you just, back that train up. In what, in what world do we not see all of the information and just get a recommendation from staff? Hold on.
We get the information, we're not part of the discussion. Staff comes forward with a recommendation for us, and we have our own discussion about it.
I...
I mean, I don't help put the packets together, do you know what I mean? There's a point, and I come into the discussion later.
Mm-hmm. I'm just, I'm concerned about the, the transparency of this.
I agree with you. I want it transparent, but I think it's as transparent as, to me, more so than any other process we've had.
But if, so if we get a, for example, I just want to make sure I'm understanding you, and so if we get a site plan that comes before us, Justin and Jordan have a, have a checklist, it's online, you know, and you, you need to check off all these things before your site plan, you know, not special land use, not any of that, just your site plan comes to the planning commission to get approved. So, yes, the city staff reviews it, probably our, our zoning consultants approve it, maybe even other departments, but we, but we see all of that. We have their reports, we know that they've gone through this very specific checklist.
Same thing. That was part of the, I think, the struggle for staff, is to say, what criteria are you looking for beyond state certification, right, in that process? It shouldn't be any different. You should be very clear about what the evaluation is against and how that's rated.
Okay.
And if I may, I mean, yeah, sorry, if I may, just on, from the staff perspective, one of the things I just thought was important for you to know, just in, in considering this route, and if this is the pleasure of the commission, certainly, you know, between the commission and council, CED's ready to jump if you tell us how high. One of the things we may do is, we don't believe we have the bandwidth internally to review all of these and also conduct the day-to-day.
I think...
To do this fairly, right? I mean, we obviously want it to be transparent, fair and consistent, so what we would do to address that, we would likely tap into our existing contractual services with State Built Studio, or if they don't have the bandwidth, another firm, so that you can have that sort of consistent review process. And frankly, just speaking for myself, but I would also feel safe in speaking for our staff as well, to add another layer of impartiality. I mean, there's been a lot of intense, we'll call it outreach, from interested parties on this issue. You know, we haven't been able to take every single meeting that has been requested. In fact, we've kind of stopped taking meetings just out of fairness, and we've kind of gone to a, a mode of just kind of spitting out information as it's available, so that no one can, you know, have any sort of perception or reality of getting a leg up or an extra conversation with staff. So, just so you know, if, if it goes to that route, that is likely the way we would do it. So, so our staff would sort of, we'd sort of be a layer of quality control before your layer of quality control in looking and making sure that, that third party went through whatever checklist was established before it came to you.
If I could, through the chair, that makes me feel far more comfortable about option 2 than anything that's been discussed this evening. I was going to recommend if, first of all, if staff felt comfortable making the, doing this review on their own without a third party, because it does seem like there's some level of, of being partial. So, I, I, I think that's a great idea to go to a third party and have them do this review, then present it to you, and then you could present it to us. So, that, for me, makes me feel much more comfortable.
Through the chair. I'm favoring option 1, and I think as the planning commission, adding all these components to reviewing and, and scaling them, I mean, I think the Michigan's application really goes through and will filter out the applicants in a, in a way that we don't need to. And I think it's duplicative. And I think that option 1 is probably, it's a leaner option and it's better for the, the city in general. It creates an unbiased approach and it's very straightforward.
With all respect, I hear you, and, you know, again, everybody goes through it, but that's not the instruction we gave staff a month ago. And so I, I, yeah.
For clarity though, through the chair, as staff stated, we're still going to see these because it'll be an intensification of use. It'll still come before this body, even if we are in option 1. So, I, I, I don't see how we're not losing that. I mean, the idea of planning commission is, isn't really to put discretion into the items that are before them, they're to evaluate them to see if they meet certain criteria that are set out in ordinances and are set up.
That's fine, I'm just trying to be respectful of staff's time and where we send them off.
I understand, but i- in reviewing it and looking into it deeper, I mean, I think it's the better option. It, it just feels more like what planning commission already does, so that's where I'm at.
Well, and something like a special land use, you know, which is one of the things we were talking about last time, should this or should this not still be a special land use, allows for changes to a site plan, modifications and requests for those modifications from an applicant in order to meet certain criteria. This feels like, I'm focused much more on a business model, yes, there's land use stuff in here, of course, but, you know, what's the, what's the trigger here to ask for a modification to a site plan or to give feedback back to an applicant the way that we do in a special land use? So, if it's a permitted use with a lot of upfront work, that's more going to qualify the business worthiness of the applicant, perhaps? I mean, that's how I read option 2, is that it's more of a, like, it seems much more about the, the applicant than the site and the use.
But there's another component to it in recognizing the importance of people that made a good faith effort to follow our policy.
I agree.
And we take that arm away in our evaluation process by not doing option 2.
Well, and there's no option here that says, you know, take all 5 plus 2. I mean, like, that's...
I don't want to take all 5, yeah.
I, I would absolutely raise my hand to take all 5 plus 2. But that's, you know, that is definitely, the fact that this came back to us and still said 1 and 1 was, when I said, okay, that's what, what I would suggest is, is higher than what the council and the staff have clearly been discussing at this point. So, I mean, I'd say 2 frankly, but...
So, we're taken off the table, I'm sorry.
And I am never on the higher end of this conversation, ever.
I think there's been a lot of conversation about it, and I think we've all gone through a lot of changes on it, and I think the information that we've been getting is really, has been very great and very helpful. And it has refined this process, and we have been coming up with, with great ideas about moving forward. And I think I'm, Chair Baker, when I say, I think maybe the hi, we need the higher number with option 1, and, I mean, I understand that there are five groups that have been supportive of the community and went forward with these. They went forward with it in a business mind, though, and it was very clear from the get-go, we made it clear intentionally that there would be no bonus or no, anything special about going forward with that, and they did it on their own. To now change position on that and say, oh, actually, it did benefit you, I don't, I don't like that either as part of the criteria in, in option 2.
With all due respect, not all of them went in with the business mind and their different behaviors, I'll say, over the course of the exercise. So, I, yeah, I, I am very much in favor of more than one, though, provisioning center, if that's still the will of this planning commission and their recommendation of...
Through the chair. I think it's worth noting that nothing is stopping the existing businesses that had approval from operating under that previous, you know, permitted use. So, I also agree that I don't think that should be a consideration in, in selection in the option 2 category. I think that it has to stand on its own merits, not, not based on this, any potential speculation or any other previous consideration on that front.
The difficulty with that, and I'm not trying to rebound with the ship, I'm sorry, is that, but you've got two different now business models operating in a restricted market versus an open market, and nowhere is that going to work.
Well, nothing permits that previous applicant from applying through the second, like, the, the updated.
Correct, but they could also at risk elude the clients.
Why?
Because if I don't, if I, if I don't take the risk of going to the state and stay with the land use, supply and demand is going to provide a cheaper product at another facility and going to go.
Through the chair, I mean, I think we're dive, diving into the actual business of medical marijuana instead of being the planning commission here and looking at things from a very objective position, if possible.
I, I...
There's no basis for anyone to get some sort of special treatment, which is all that option 2, when we're looking at these other facilities that applied for certain land uses, got those land uses and had the ability to operate if they wanted to, when we were very clear to them, and as it was already stated by a member of the public, they knew that they were doing that without any special treatment consideration. To say now that we're going to give them special treatment consideration goes against everything that we did when we did allow for those, those uses. So, I, I, I'm, I'm against that, for sure.
With all due respect, I think, I just want to thanks for one thing. I do not, you know, I have the utmost respect for you guys. I think I am being objective and being part of that decision-making back when we did that. I, I understand that. I'm looking at the environment today and what, how we get the help to the patients. That's it, thank you.
So Commissioner Gray, can I, Commissioner Kathy?
Yeah, so that was kind of that first part of it, is I, I just wanted to clarify that nothing is stopping it from operating under that existing. I do think, though, that option 2 is the better route to go as far as a process, because it, option 2 with that modified to not include any sort of consideration for those previous approvals, having any differentiation in their scoring. I do think that the option 2, though, is something that is outside of, a lot of these issues are outside of the purview of the planning commission.
Mm-hmm.
When we're talking about business plans and that sort of thing, so I would support the review and scoring by some third party, whether it's either city staff or third, third party, however, the city wants to go through that process. And if that gets reviewed here for those things that are pertinent to, you know, the typical site plan review and that sort of thing, I think that makes sense, but for us to be making decisions on, on some of those other categories doesn't, doesn't make much sense to me. And I would also agree with, you know, one is too few and maybe three isn't a, a place to start. It does allow for there to be potential competition within the city of Ferndale. I know markets are different than city boundaries, but it also, we don't have all the eggs in one basket, let's say, you know, as far as one business can be very different from its separate business. So I think that allows for that. And then the third portion on the process, I want to still state, state that whether it's state-first or local-first, there's still, it's not guaranteed that you'll get the approval through the other one. So if they come through us first, get the approvals as one of, whether it's one or three, they still have to go through the state process, and that might not make it through. And I think it gets rid of the arbitrary portion of the way we had option 1, where it was just based on whoever gets it first from the state rushes down here. So that's why I think option 2 kind of clarifies that, which is good, but it does not really solve the issue of still needing two approvals, two different locations, and, you know, the nature of that timing-wise. I, I don't know what to say, other than, you know, if we have three, there's, that does address the issue of if one, if we only have one and they struggle to get their permit or, you know, approval through the state, there's other ones that it could also open. Yeah, I, I don't think we have, I don't think it solves that, that process as far as which one goes first and guarantee that it would open, but it does address the arbitrary timing aspect of it.
Commissioner Kathy?
I, I wanted to agree with Councilman Martin as far as, I, I believe that the, the facilities that have been, the caregivers who have been given some amount of, the caregivers who have opened already and have gone through that good faith effort to open and provide care for their, their patients, to me, make, it makes sense for them to receive some sort of foot in the door as, as far as this scoring process goes, but that shouldn't be whole cloth for all five that were previously permitted. That being said, I think option 2 might also allow us to, if we believe that there were a lot of speculative special land uses that were given out before, or, or facilities that were opening before, this possibly allows us to forego any speculative business opening for perhaps a recreational marijuana facility in the future. I don't know if we're thinking about that as we're thinking about these medical marijuana facilities, but in the future, at some point, recreational facilities may open, and, and I believe it's in, in the near future, so maybe we should continue to try, try and find someone who will, again, open as a medical facility for patients and not as a speculative business for future development. So, I, again, I just, I, I would say that option 2 seems to be the better option for that reason.
Questions 1 or 2?
Um, just a question on that through the chair of, of why that would be a less speculative process. I, I think if you could help understand that point.
It just, to me, appears that these businesses will now be vetted out much more clearly than they would be, or much, they would be vetted out better than they would be if they just went to the state, if they were being reviewed intern, in-house and by a, a third party.
And if I had the scoring system, would, wouldn't give ultimate rule to those first five, we're saying those that actually physically opened and made a good faith effort to see patients may get an advantage in, in the point system. Not a deciding of all things, but a recognition of the fact that they went ahead and pursued our policy goals. It's not a, it's not a litmus test, it's just what you do with the score.
I have an, an operational question. In option 2, a number of these requirements or, I'm, I'm trying to picture how these applications would be, would be reviewed, and a number of these are reasonably site-specific. So, how would you, are you expecting applications to be tied to a specific site? Are you expecting people to identify a potential site? You know, how would we know whether the provisioning center or safety compliance facility will be consistent with land use for the surrounding neighborhood if they're not here yet?
I think what we spoke about was that it would be tied to a specific location, so someone would have a real property interest in a location, that would rule out some of the speculation that could be, could be happening now. Instead of spinning staff's wheels or, or a, a third-party reviewer, if there's a, a tie to a specific property and location, I think that should be required. I believe that's how we wrote it.
Through the chair, it is, it's, the application would be site-specific and would have to identify the proposed location.
So, option 2 presupposes that you have site control, whether you own it or you rent it, you have control over an address you're putting on your application.
Yes. And again, that's for the application, for the, for the permit, so, so yes, it does require that.
Through the chair. How does, I, I guess, this for the city, how does putting the city first for, for application process, or putting the state first for application process effectively remove this race situation that we're talking about in races and getting somewhere first? So, either I'm going to be racing here to get my application in first or to the state. I, I, I don't understand how option 2, like, alleviates that issue. I understand what we're saying, when, once you get state approval, you're going to have a lot of people trying to come here and get in front, in front of us and get this approval. Option 2, they're still doing that, it's just following or a different, a new process and an additional process. So, does it alleviate that, is, or how does it, in, in your opinion?
I don't think it does. I think option 2 is more of a race, really. Option 1, the race that has been talked about... Um, option one, the race that has been talked about by, uh, at both public hearings, I think, is related to the scenario in which the state would approve, you know, five facilities in Ferndale on the same day. And we have people camping out and waiting for the call from the Capitol and they're running up here to the front door, um, which I think is less likely than the race that would happen with option two.
One clarification through the chairs. I think that what it solves is the arbitrary nature of if approval, you know, it went through the state process and one case is managed by one individual and the other one's handled by somebody else. You know, let's say A is submitted first, B is submitted later, but B gets approved first, and then they are the ones that are first in line to the city. Um, I think the option two with the 30-day enrollment period, it's, you know, you have an open window that says, do you accept anything that comes in during that period of time? And it's not just based on who happens to get through first, whether they literally are the ones that submitted first or if they had been, um, approved first just by some, something outside of their control. So to me, I think that, that's the difference as far as that aspect.
Through the chair, in option two, would the city limit the number of applicants in that 30-day window?
No.
Okay.
So, and so the, the race isn't against the clock. It, there's, there's a period for submittal. You know, should the, the vetting process of option two proceed and, and there's no candidates, they, there's, there's not the number, you know, then it would, then after that period, if the, the number that is authorized is unfulfilled, then it would be on a, a as submitted basis. But during that enrollment pa- period, it's based on the recommendation or the, the scoring that's proposed into rather than the race.
So are you then stamping dating and putting in line? I mean, so there was a question about, you know, what happens if, where the approved business is closed? If someone loses a license at the state level, you know, sort of who's next in line? Is, is the idea that the city is kind of maintaining a process of some sort?
So that's my fear too, and just maybe this will clear it up.
I'm not sure if I understand that question. Maybe.
So if, if we approve five at the city level and all five are waiting for state approval and two get approved, and then we have six, seven, eight and nine in that 30-day window who have state approval but don't have city approval, how, how are we effectively choosing at that point? I mean, so the idea is to get pharmacies on the market to sell to patients. Okay? So if I go and get state approval, I know I've got state approval. This is why I'm for getting state approval first. Then I come to the city and then the city can approve me in, in a way I can go. Now, if I get approval here and lose it to state.
Under the, the proposed text, the, uh, whatever the ultimate body is that is going to be issuing the permits would only be issuing permits for the number that is authorized. So to, to the extent that it's five provisioning centers, you would score those within the 30-day period and issue not more than, than five permits. And those permities would then be endeavoring to secure state-issued licenses and would not be able to operate in the city until they had achieved and obtained such license. And if they had not, and then their permit was, you know, and they, they were rejected at the state, then there would be an opportunity for the number of permits to issue, to be issued to, to go up by that respective amount.
And who's next in line was my question.
Yeah, I'm through the chair. I, I think the understanding there is you have a 30-day period where you get all the applications, that closes, then they're evaluated and scored. And they're, the top scores are the ones that get the permits. So you will have a ranking of all applicants that are applied during that window.
That's right.
If the first five go through, one drops out, you go to number six and so on. Um, I think that's the process.
So do we open this annually, like healthcare enrollment?
Well, I, my understanding is.
Unless, not unless after six months or whatever the period of time is and you increase the number, then you could.
Uh, increase the number, someone goes out of business, any number of things could happen that you would need to bring someone up from the list. How do you ever get new, new applicants into the list?
Well, there is contemplated, if that number isn't met, then it is on a as-applied basis.
That's a very legitimate point in both options.
So, so the only fear I have is what if I, I don't get, I already have my state approval right now and I don't get picked in those first five. I could be opening and, and ready to give to the public here, but I can't because I wasn't part of the first five. I lost in that race, just as the other fear. And that's, I mean, the idea is let's get something open. I think that the less prohibitive fashion is go to the state, get the license and then come here when you're ready and we know you can open. Because I agree with staff, which I think is the concern is, we process five applications, three drop off. We go back 30-day window, open it again. We go through 30 applications, we get our top five, two maybe, you know? I mean, it's a lot of built-in work that I don't think we want to put. I think, I, that's why I'm, I think option one, it's, I get that there's a little bit of this, um, discretion and we get to look at applicants more, um, it looks like in, in two. But I think we'll still get to look at them just as much in one when they come here for approval. So that's my fears. If it, the idea is getting these places open so that people can safely get their medicine, we need the least obstructive means of doing that. So.
Through the chair, um, after hearing the discussion, I tend toward option one. I think, um, good cases and a lot of work have gone into this, but I think for a lot of those reasons, that's the one that stands out to me to one that I'd be likely to support.
Through the chair, um, question for the city attorney. Um, for the planning commission's role, the options, that, that is part of the regulatory ordinance, correct? So the planning commission could make a recommendation, um, but it's not a, they aren't voting specifically on that tonight, correct?
That's, that's correct.
That's an excellent point.
I'm just thinking of motions and how they might change and.
Yeah, all the, all the motions are recommendations.
They are, but they're all in tax amendments to the, the zoning ordinance. Yeah. Not the.
Not the, not the permitting, except for the permitting. That is not in the zoning ordinance.
And we don't have a motion on it, right?
Commercial office tech, not a motion. Industrial district tech. Yeah. I mean, I think this common body should still make a recommendation on it.
Um, we briefly discussed, um, the, the next item, I'm just going to move forward a little bit. We can come back. We need, um, about this, about the recommendation that this is now a, a permitted use. And we've heard from the city that even though it's a permitted use, it would be staff's intent to, to still bring these site plans to the planning commissions. Any additional comments or discussions on permitted use, which is a change currently special changes? Uh, we talked about it right at the beginning, but in terms of, uh, the fact that the recommendation is that this become a permitted use, um, and that city staff has, has already said that they would intend to bring us site plans, um, for anything rather than just approving administratively, even though it's not a special changes. So I don't see anyone clamoring to say this needs to stay as special changes.
I'm sorry, which one?
Um, just wanted to, to reconfirm, um, that the commission was comfortable with this moving into the realm of a permitted use rather than a special changes. And we've talked about evaluation, um, in terms of, what it sounds like is that the commission is, is leaning toward a six-month review rather than nine and that we would, um, like that review to include a conversation about zoning districts and locations as well as, uh, types and limits of marijuana facilities. Anything else you would want to see in six months? So we'll know, should we have all five? Uh, you know, what are, what are thoughts on that? What are the, for the communities? A little recommendation on should these be in commercial districts? See that, that type of thing would come back for a conversation as part of that in six months. Anything else you would want in that?
I think just asking, because I think things are going to come up. We can't proceed, just asking for a comprehensive review in six months.
Or maybe we agree, um, we always have, you know, space on the agenda for administrative items. Um, and, and we used to have space on the agenda for commission items. Um, but if there's something that comes up, perhaps we've heard something has happened in another city or we have a question about how something is going that we, we bring it to the table just so that Justin and Jordan have as complete a picture as possible for when they start this review. Makes sense? So the last, oh, you know what? Shoot. Um, Justin, I meant to, to ask about, um, to be talked a bit about what happens if a business opens and then closes or loses their license. You know, that is, is really tied to the discussion around option one or option two. There was a question about disposal and so in, in some language about how things are stored and disposed of. That might be hanging around from the old ordinance. Um, but the, I think it was Richard that mentioned it. Um, that there are strict, uh, uh, state provisions around disposal and that perhaps we just update our language to align with, with that? Thoughts?
We can review that, yes. Um, I don't think we focused on that during this most recent. We did, we did kind of set it up as.
It certainly predates the state rules.
It does. Yeah.
There is issues that are embodied within the existing texts that have been now addressed by the state.
So the state rules may even be more strict now than when we originally drafted this. Uh, there was also a question about a CFO requirement. Um,
I think that's a valid point. I, with you, through the chair.
Yeah.
That I believe was as it relates to option one, though.
Okay.
Again, depending on how this body rules, it may not be.
Order of operations.
But the concept I don't think was included in the option two. It is in option two as well. So I think that's a valid point.
Okay.
Uh, because option two does contemplate the period of time where they would, well, the, the point I think was what, why have somebody undertake intensive expenditures to get CFO where there may not be, uh, certainty or high-level certainty regarding a licensee? And I think that could be modified to, uh, come back later at a later point and not be part of the application process on the front end.
Yeah, in terms of having a CFO, you know, are, would we be comfortable with that being modified to you needing to have site control or back it up even one more step that you have the option to have site control? Because if we are, again, depending on option one or option two, you're asking for a really significant investment upfront for someone who may not know whether or not they're getting approval. So in option two, do we want you to have site control and/or a CFO before you, you know, get ranked? I think that, that was the nature of the question.
I think the CFO issue was the issue raised, not site control. I think site control, having site control, you're certainly going to need for the state, state license as well.
Got it. So not just an option.
And so the recommendation is that there is site, site control.
Okay. But thank you. That will help with some of the race to the door as well. So the last point here, um, uh, again, goes back to the, goes back to the number of facilities, but it also talks about, um, the existing facilities, um, how they're, you know, currently allowed to operate and would continue to, you know, they, they're, they do have approval, excuse me, to operate in a certain manner that is more restrictive than what the new, the new law is. Uh, I don't know if we need to have any additional discussion on, this was more of a.
Not in the zoning ordinance.
Explanatory or statement of that. So Justin, um, just to make sure that, that we're clear, we've got a number of motions related to tax amendments in the zoning ordinance, um, that are, that are written out here. Um,
With respect to.
We don't have a motion.
Right. That's what we're working through right here to see what motion covers, which component of the discussion?
We don't have a motion specifically on the option one versus option two.
Correct.
But would it be useful to staff and to Councilman Martin to have, if, if one can be reached, a recommendation from this body to take to city council? Even though it's not technically in the zoning ordinance?
Yeah, if I may through the chair, actually, the first motion, the potential medical marijuana tax amendment motion does cover the number of facilities. So if it's the will of this body to amend the number of approved, we can do it there as one of the findings.
Thank you. That's a.
We would need a separate motion to designate option two, correct? If we wanted to go to option two. If there's no stomach to do that, then we probably don't have to do anything, right? Because option one's already in the, or do we have to say option one or two?
Again, that's the permitting. You have to, I mean, I think it would be helpful for council for this body to make a recommendation as it relates to which one that it believes is important. But again, it's not an amendment of the zoning ordinance. It doesn't require.
So you need a permitting recommendation?
Right.
Okay.
Which would be something we craft at the table. That's not baked into any of these. Thank you. In terms of the hours of operation, where does that fall? If we wanted to make sure that hours of operation were consistent across all days?
I believe that's the first one.
Is that still in the first one?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's actually embodied in both, but it, it's in section 165 as well.
Other than the conversation about option one and option two.
Did we want to dictate a six-month review? I'm sorry.
Uh, that, that was actually my, the, the recommendation about a review time isn't in the ordinance. It's something you just want direction from.
It's in section 165.
It is in section 165.
So we'd add it as another finding, finding B?
Do I feel like you're making this motion, Helfner?
No. Yeah, I don't care. Uh, I would move the planning commission recommend approval of the amendment to article eight, use regulation, section 24 dash 165, medical marijuana facilities to city council as summarized below from the following items. Uh, additional to finding A, finding B, that the number of provisioning facilities be increased to three. Item C, that the hours of operation are not dictated. Is that what we're saying?
Just consistent across.
It's the same, consistent across the board, uh, Monday through Sunday. And D, that there is a six-month review period to evaluate the effectiveness of the changes.
Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Thank you. That was a motion by Councilman Martin and that was a second by Commissioner Azar. Discussion on the motion. Councilman Martin, just to clarify, um, the increase to three provisioning facilities then still, um, contemplates one, uh, of the other.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you for the clarification.
You had mentioned it earlier. I didn't know.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Should we specify in, uh, finding, the hours finding that it's 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM?
If you'd like, sure.
Do you accept that amendment, Commissioner Azar? Thank you. So we will standardize the hours across all days, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Any additional discussion on the motion? All right, no one's looking at me. Ready to vote when you are, Bart.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Garik?
Yes.
Brazen?
Yes.
Farr?
Yes.
Casio?
Yes.
Azar?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes, with that explanation.
Okay. And Baker?
Yes. Uh, Commissioner Martin, uh, Councilman?
Whichever. It doesn't matter. Um, I just, I really appreciate everybody's discussion around this. I don't know that I'm 100% sold on this, but I, I support your. I don't know that I'm 100% sold on this, but I support your deliberations as a body, and I'm very interested in moving this on to council, so.
Thank you, we've got a couple of additional motions here as well, and you do need all of them made this evening, correct?
Yeah, I assume the Planning Commission recommend approval of the amendments to Article 19, definition, section 24-445, 24-459, 24-469 to the City Council as summarized by the findings below.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. That was a motion by Commissioner, Councilman Martin, and a second by Commissioner Azar. Is there discussion on that motion? Before we move on, I just have a clarifying question. I want to make sure the conversation about the CFO should come in our recommendation about option one versus option two. Thank you very much. I may put my note in the right place? Okay. All right, we'll have a vote when you're ready.
Commissioner Brazen?
Yes.
Farr?
Yes.
Cassio?
Yes.
Gurek?
Yes.
Azar?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes, thank you, that motion passes. Two more to go, three?
Let me keep going, I don't want to hog the motions.
Roll with it, sir.
All right, motion, I move that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the amendment to Article 4 Commercial and Office Districts to City Council as summarized below in the findings.
Is there a second to that motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Again, that motion was made by Councilman Martin with a second by Commissioner Azar, and we'll call a vote from the clerk. Oh, I'm so sorry, yes, thank you. Discussion on the motion.
Through the chair, I was wondering if there is any value or, you know, in doing this one for office service as a special land use first permitted, or if that doesn't make any sense to separate that out from the industrial districts?
For the reason of just the proximity to single families?
Yeah, I guess it's the difference in the, the actual use of the district as well as the geographic distribution of the way it's aligned.
Given the limited size of that district, I don't, I don't feel strongly about it being a special land use. Would anyone else want to, in office service, especially?
I mean, it really is next to industrial districts in almost every case.
Residential, I mean?
No.
Oh, industrial.
It actually is next to the industrial, so it's almost, it is almost the same, but it is a little bit different.
To me, personally, looking at the zoning map earlier, I just don't see a reason why we might just, you know, at first blush, why we might grant it in one area of the office and service district and not another, so I would be inclined to make it a permitted use as well.
I thought there is, there is a, I'm going to pull up the map again, but a portion of the office service that's within M1, in the south, where other locations are next to M2 and others that are, there's one in the southeast that is just adjacent to residential. So I guess there's those three unique parts of the district, but it's not a make or break thing for me, but just wanted to make sure we had the discussion.
Any additional discussion on the motion?
Just for, we're pulling up the map, just if we can have...
All right, I don't hear any additional discussion on the motion. No amendments at this time? Then we'll take our roll call vote?
Commissioners Farr?
Yes.
Cassio?
Yes.
Gurek?
Yes.
Azar?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Brazen?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes, that motion passes.
And lastly, I'll move the Planning Commission recommend approval of, not lastly, I'm sorry, there's one after this, motion that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the amendment to Article 6 Industrial Districts to City Council as summarized below in the findings.
Is there support?
Second.
Thank you, that was a motion by Councilman Martin with a second by Commissioner Gurek. Discussion on motion. All right, then we'll call a vote from the clerk.
Cassio?
Yes.
Gurek?
Yes.
Azar?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Brazen?
Yes.
Farr?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes, that motion passes.
And then, before I make the last motion, I'm seeking clarification, the will of this body, is it to recommend option one or option two?
I don't know that you have consensus from this body.
No, that I do either.
So I think you could make a motion and we could discuss.
I'd rather make a motion that will pass and vote against it if I don't like it.
I understand. My politician friend.
All right, for discussion purposes, I will move that we adopt option one as a permitting recommendation to City Council for consideration.
With the elimination of the CFO requirement?
With the elimination of the CFO requirement.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. So that was a recommendation that the code of ordinances reflect a process related to option one without the CFO requirement, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that motion was made by Councilman Martin with a second by Commissioner Farr, yes?
Yes.
Thank you. And discussion on that motion. This was certainly the most discussed item this evening. I'm not passing judgment, it's important.
No, 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 it is important, yeah.
And I wouldn't be surprised if it got refined further, you know, before it ultimately came to council. We are not an approving body for this.
I think it's important for some topic to go to the approving body for this, so. Whether it's what I agree with or not, I'd like something to go with.
Some direction, okay. Do we want to take a stop hold? Do we want to discuss?
If I could, through the chair, while I do think that with the addition of two more provisioning centers, per our recommendation, makes option one more palatable, because it's not a race for one spot, I still think that it can be seen as a race to get, get one of these positions, and I still, I would like to go with option two, but if it's the will of the Planning Commission, then I certainly will support going with option one.
And this will ultimately be the, the will of council, you know, so...
Of course, if it's what we want directly.
Through the chair. I'm for option one, and the reason is, is that the fears that I think we expressed that kind of resulted in us getting option two may not have been clear when, the last time we met, and I think option one still allows us to review these plans and allows the city to look at these plans and make sure all the boxes are checked, and the state's going to be reviewing these such that we will still get the best applicants. I think this is a situation where there's a race no matter what, and I think by creating more obstacles, we're not helping the public as much by getting these things in place as fast, so that's why I'm a supportive one.
I have a clarifying question for the city attorney, and you may or may not know this. When an application or an applicant heads to the state, is the, is the state license tied to a site, or is it tied to an applicant? So we're essentially, we're essentially saying, get site control, go to the state and get your permit, and then come back here and get in line, so if you've...
Well, no, under option one, not get in line, then you would be issued a permit, assuming, up to the number.
Yeah, right. So the, if they're number four and we permit three, do they need to go back through the process to try to get a license for another community?
Well, they would not be able to operate in this community, and I don't want to give recommendations as to what they may or may not do.
I mean, at the state level, so would this, would that state license be transferred to another community?
The state's not going to issue, the state wouldn't issue four for, if the ultimate decision is to allow three, because the state will have the zoning ordinance that has the maximum, and wouldn't issue more than the number that's authorized in the zoning ordinance.
I see, okay. So right now, the state hasn't issued any for Ferndale, because it's not authorized.
That's true, that's correct.
Okay, well, that's, okay, thank you. That's very helpful. Option, I mean, option one is my, is my preference.
I'm sorry, you said option one was?
Yeah, this is a really great discussion, but I think ultimately, again, just transparency and the, the fact that, that the two notes that I made two days ago on this were duplicative and outside of the area of expertise of the Planning Commission when it came to option two, so that's, I guess that would be my, my, the words I'd want to pass on to the City Council for consideration for a code of ordinance update. Any other discussion on the motion?
Yeah, through the chair.
Oh, God, I skipped over it, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Where in the state statutes are you seeing that limitation based on ordinance? My understanding was you could still get state approval, but in a, but you'd still have to get permitted through the city, that it wasn't restricted in your application? To a certain location? Yeah, your location potentially, you could get your state approval, and that's what I was just looking for.
Like the total number per, for the city approved by the state?
Right, if we looked at Rule 5, two, or is it, where is it?
Are you looking at the emergency rules?
I think so. I thought it was H under Rule 82H, it just talks about it, proposed facilities and the location it contains multiple tenants and any applicable occupancy restrictions, I thought it was falling somewhere in there, but I just didn't see it where that restriction lies with the state application. And I'm sorry to put you on the spot, it's not addressed.
Yeah, I mean, this is, it could just be information to be gathered before the council meeting.
Yeah, that's, that's not important to my decision. I don't know the exact location, but I believe it's in there. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, for the council meeting, that may be important information for this discussion of option one versus option two.
Well, there is a pre, and you're aware of the pre-licensure checklist, too, which is site-specific.
Hi.
Hello, if I may, sorry. Just for context discussion, Justin Danaskis, 169 West Clarkson Road, actually worked on the state bills, and just for clarification, you might want to talk in the context of pre-qualification versus qualification with the state. The state's not going to fully permit anyone unless they have local permitting approval first. The state is not going to pick the winners and losers, you say, we only want three, they say they're not getting past us until they have that local approval first. Pre-qualification, and if you're just looking at, hey, go to the state, get vetted and so forth, well, now, there's going to be 12 applicants up from the licensing board tomorrow, so some of that permitted, gets permitted in Ann Arbor, there's a gentleman up for that, then he can just run over here, because he's the only one in the state for a while, to then come get it, and no one will ever get fully approved for Ferndale, they can only get pre-qualified, and once you're pre-qualified, you still have to add your phase two specifically, so just a little context, will that help through your discussions?
So your pre-qualification is not site-specific?
Correct. They don't look at anything specific, there's nothing related to a site on that.
Through the chair, Laura has told me that they, when I've spoken to their representatives, that there's either option that can proceed, and while there's some that wait, there's other, they've indicated that they'll process the application for a state license consistent with the local zoning ordinance, but again, I'm not sure.
I mean, in terms of our discussion tonight, it sounds like the Planning Commission can work through, you know, most any process that the city, you know, says is legal and, you know, complies with the order of operations at the state level. I think we're being as thoughtful as possible with the information that we have, but there's got to be 10 attorneys in the room who are, you know, certainly well, well more informed than me. So, I mean, obviously, whatever motion we'd make isn't binding, and, you know, Dan, there may be more information to gather before...
No, no, I understand.
You take a, I imagine you'll be taking some explanation or something to the council of agents, so.
Yep.
Additional discussion on this motion? This motion was to recommend that the code of ordinances reflect option one without the CFO requirement as a preferred option from Planning Commission discussion. Are we ready for a vote, or is there additional discussion?
Yeah, through the chair, I mean, it's a unique case, because, you know, it's a new use, but also limited number allowed, so it's kind of a unique situation, and that's where we're coming into our, the whole timing issue. I don't know if I'd feel comfortable recommending either option, especially as option two is written. There would be a significant rewrite of that, and with option one, I think there's some problems inherent there. I guess we don't have a clear answer of whether the state would issue the actual license or not, I guess there's some discussion on that, but if they did, and they hadn't come to the city to go through the process, now, okay, we have three applicants, they may or may not be permitted through the state first, but if they are, you know, the 500-foot radius, for instance...
Correct.
These could be two neighboring parcels.
Correct.
So we don't really have an answer to how that process would be worked out.
Yeah.
I think the idea of a pre-qualification and those being vetted and going through the city after that, you know, alleviates some of that, but it's, it's kind of messy, no matter which way we're looking at this option, so I don't feel comfortable recommending any options that we have as stated here. Obviously, it's the permitting process, so it's outside of the scope of the Planning Commission, so.
Through the chair, I think, I feel the same way, I think maybe we are not like the, the body that knows it all, like the most informed, subject matter experts.
We certainly have the option of not taking action on the motion. I think, do I have the option of not taking action on the motion? Looking at the clerk, okay.
No, no, if I may, through the chair, I don't want to table anything, I need the discussion, I don't need, I would like this, we've got a significant amount of time invested in this. If the answer is to push it to council, then the answer is to push it to council. I don't want to come back in a month and try to come up with another recommendation.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
If we as a body can, I don't want to stall this process with another month of Planning Commission, no offense.
That wasn't, that wasn't my intent, was to have anything come back. My intent was if we don't make a recommendation, we don't make a recommendation.
So I make a recommendation?
In that case, rather than there being any confusion and tabling something, do we, I mean, I'm looking at...
I will withdraw the motion.
I'm looking at the clerk, do we withdraw the motion, or do we, okay. I don't want to send the wrong message by us voting in the town.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does the seconder need to withdraw it, or just the...
Seconder really doesn't even count.
Sorry.
I know, it's not harder.
Sorry, Josh, seconder doesn't really count. Jeez.
It's all right.
I'm telling attorney, he doesn't count.
Yeah, once he's withdrawn, it's...
That's why I am an attorney, because I don't count, don't count that.
All right, so those were all of the motions in front of us, we dealt with the issues related to the zoning ordinance, we did not make a specific recommendation on the item related to the regulatory code. Justin and Dan, is there anything on this topic that we've, you know, sort of left unanswered this, do we, do we miss any motions?
I don't think for this evening.
Okay. There's obviously a big open question about the process.
Sure.
Um, that is outside our purview.
But I think the conversation was very helpful, and, you know, I think you, you were all battling with a lot of the things that staff was, so.
Certainly.
I think it was a worthwhile discussion, and I think it'll point us in a direction for council, so.
Yeah, you guys have been working on it for at least a year now. Thank you, city attorney. Thanks for joining us.
And if somebody suggested five minutes?
I, absolutely. I was just about to say, we've got some folks who I know are going to be headed out. Um, so we will take a five-minute adjournment, we'll be back at nine oh six.